I think it looks like everybody's been able to get in. We've got participants coming in and all board members. I think one, two, three, four, five are accounted for. So I think we're ready to start if you would like to get us going.
Yes, I would. Welcome, everybody, to our January 11th, 2021 School Board Meeting. I am serving this year as your president alongside Vice President Corey McHenry and the rest of our esteemed school board members. So thank you for joining us today. First thing I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Corey, would you lead us in that today?
I would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Corey. Okay, item to be on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. And I believe Jeff is that going back to you for that one?
Yeah, I acknowledge that the geographical region of Canis is located on the ancestral and territorial lands of the Chinook and Kowals people, and that the Chinook are still fighting to be a federally recognized tribe on their own land.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving down the agenda to item three, the Milltown Pride Awards, one of our favorite parts of the board meeting always. And today we are recognizing a Liberty Middle School librarian.
I'm coming, Tracy. Sorry, it's a
Maybe I'm too fast for you.
It's the, the Google is just like spinning a little bit here right now. So bear with me on some of the transitions as I navigate between slides. So for those of you that are new to a board meeting, just this is a way we usually start our board meetings, just thinking about this wonderful community and all that went into making it what it is today. And the people that are demonstrating Milltown Pride today and just thinking about our future collectively. And so tonight, we are recognizing teacher librarian Hannah Rivas from Little Liberty Middle School. And I've included the nomination here on the screen and a great picture of Hannah and her wonderful smile. And Hannah, you know, as you guys know, we've also tried to utilize the Milltown Pride to just highlight staff who are really, and community members and students who are really kind of innovating and going above and beyond during these really trying times. And so Gary, would you like to speak a little about Hannah and why your team nominated her?
I would be happy to. I, I, I sat down to write like a nice statement about what I'd say. And what I ended up coming up with was just a really nice long list of things that Hannah contributes to Liberty, especially this year. So I'm going to read you a quick list in no particular order. Before break, Hannah took it upon herself to create baskets for the staff and then raffled those baskets away for anybody who signed into the building that day. She, she donated that for us and came up with the idea herself. She brings treats in that she bakes daily, pretty much, for the staff and any students who might be in the building. As opposed to like her official duties, as the, this is the school library media specialist. She's created a book checkout system where she went out into the community and got donations, where every kid who checks out a book gets a little goodie bag with the book in it. And she decorates the outside of the bag, makes it very personal. And she's helping our new staff that we have in the building. So our new classified staff, kind of working with students. She is serving, and this is kind of like the big one. She has said, I have capacity in my day, like let me work with kids in person, like, like give them to me. So we've got some kids coming in, those who kind of are the furthest from educational justice, who need, who need some help during the day. And so she's, you know, she's giving them a safe place to work, supporting them in their work. She, for Christmas or for, you know, over the holidays, she got the kids coats and pants that she's been working with and socks, I think. And then during like, for a break, she's taking him over to Doc Harris. We're taking him into the gym, following the, the safety guidelines and letting them get some exercise. Hold on, I have a second page on my sticky notes. She's gone out of her way to make sure that the library is stocked with books for the integrated communications class. And finally, although I probably missed something, sorry Hannah, she's also subbing for teachers on a regular basis. And just like, honestly, like I, I think that like my associate principals are pretty valuable in keeping this place running. But Hannah has like, she is our MVP so far for the 2021 school year. So I'm very happy to give her this recognition and any more that I can think of. So.
Thank you, Principal Muller. I really appreciate you jumping on tonight. And I think we have Hannah with us. Hannah, any, any comments you would like to make? First of all, just thank you so much for all that you do on behalf of the board and the district. And I've seen it in action many times, but I'll just open it up to any comments from you.
I am very honored to receive this award. I tell everyone who asks, when I meet students for the first time, the first thing I tell everyone is, this is my dream job. I love working in Canis. You care deeply about the students. It's well organized, well run. We have a wonderful student population. And I love all of the different aspects of my job. This is my dream job. Being a librarian where I get to work with students, especially this year, getting to really encourage and equip those students who are really struggling and giving them hope and encouragement and the skills that they need to be successful in this challenging time. I, it's been, it's been a different kind of year, but I love that it has encouraged me to develop new skills and to create new programs at Liberty so I can better equip the students, staff and families in our community. So I'm really honored to be receiving this Milltown Pride Award.
And Hannah, I will swing by to officially deliver it to you. Thank you for being on the call tonight and thanks for everything you do. And just a reminder to our board that we have so many staff, students and community members that do these kinds of things. And Hannah is very special, but she also represents a great group of teacher librarians across our district that have really been very creative and innovative in terms of trying to get books into kids' hands and continue that love of reading, which we know is so important. So thank you, Hannah, for being on here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. We're so fortunate to have you and appreciate you being here today. And also have to say, go Lions, because I have an eighth grade Liberty student. So go Lions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. So next we'll move on to item on the agenda for a strong community, family and business partnerships, where we are going to hear from the Dorothy Fox Elementary Natural Playground.
Yeah, I want to introduce Dr. Sork to you guys. You guys all know Dr. Sork. But we were supposed to have a community dedication. And that didn't work out quite so well. And it just seems like that we're pretty used to having to pivot here. And so Dr. Sork is going to tell us a little about what happened at the Elementary Natural Playground.
Absolutely. Well, we were supposed to have a lot of things related to this playground, but that really is the story of the people that put so much into this is they didn't let any of those barriers stop. Sometimes it delayed, sometimes it rescheduled or shuffled, or we had to shift our thinking. But this group would not be deterred in bringing this dream to reality. And so many of them are on today, representing our PTA leadership, our PTA grounds crew. In the letter that you have in your consent agenda, we also acknowledge many of our local businesses that helped us out, donated items and made this possible. But it goes way back to three years ago. And they just kept feeding, you know, flaming those embers, just keep fanning them, kept it alive, kept it going, fundraised. You'll see that $42,000 is the estimated value. And so I have a short kind of slideshow to show you because you can't really get the spirit of this project unless you see it come to life. And we also had big plans for these really productive, large groups of volunteers who were going to do all of this work. And then due to COVID restrictions, we really were limited in the number of people that could be on site, even outdoors. So a lot of the manual labor, and it was a lot of manual labor, was done by a very small group of people. And some are grounds crew, but a lot of it are PTA board. And I can guarantee you, not one of us really knew what we were doing. But that didn't stop us. We just figured it out. And the, the teamwork and the grit that was shown on the cold and mucky days. And so I'm going to just narrate this picture. It lasts about three minutes, but you can see a little bit of the journey that this group went on. We are so blessed to have such a large, oops, hold on, let me share a screen here. We have such a large playground that we have a lot of options for our families in order to just, you know, make this something special. Can I get a thumbs up if you can see this now? Okay, so our Dorothy Fox Playground, first it was, again, just having the dream of additional play items that would really mean something to our kids. And we involved our kids in the design of how can we enhance their play experience with more natural materials, with different kinds of climbing, with imaginative play approaches. So we worked with kids and our natural play designs company that helped us dream up several phases. We ended up getting all kinds of specs and, and purchased a parkour element. So we planned it out. We got donations of logs from a local logger. Thank you, Jason McKeithrin, for hooking us up. That got delivered and we thought, wow, what are we going to do with all of these? Nutter Corporation came and excavated. Thank you to tech department. Then they planned out like, how are we going to design this part? And they did it by hand. We measured a million things, dreamed, designed, tried again. This was eventually what we decided to do. We used logs from the Lacamas Playground as we were looking for additional material. And it started to take shape. Even in the middle of COVID, we had dirt and gravel and all kinds of things delivered to the site. And most of that was placed through the shovels and the individual work of our PTA board and their families and anyone else that we could gather to put this together. And our grounds crew was amazing. This is them, those logs are so heavy, you have to lift them with special equipment. And they were instrumental in placing and cutting and putting those pieces. But even our own team just pushed them around and figured out how to make it work, how to lay concrete. Every piece of bark was pushed by our PTA team. Just wheelbarrow at a time, ERS donated equipment. But it just came to life and it was, it was, it felt like a kept secret because we didn't have kids in the building. So we would take pictures and try to share with them what was happening, but it was cold and rainy and muddy. And that didn't stop our crew from being out there and doing what we could to put it together. And it turned out spectacular, absolutely spectacular. Everything I learned about sledgehammering, I learned from Tricia Golding, but I couldn't get very many pictures of her. This is the picture of the logger. So it has come together to be a place of pride and a place that represents determination and teamwork by those that worked on it. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Our counselor was a big part in getting that placed. But it's going to be a true legacy for the kids to come, a source of pride for all of those that worked on it. And we think it's really going to enhance the experience of kids playing together, using their imagination and having access to natural material. But it was, you know, who knew when we planned this that people would be manually putting this together? It was just incredible. Our kids, the few kids that get to play on it so far, it is definitely the favorite zone of all of the zones of our playground. And I just want to say, thank you so much. You know, Tammy Spears was one of our early leaders to keep it alive, Alison Abernathy. But the project manager on this project was really Tricia Golding, and she could work for any construction company at this point and put together any construction project. And we are just so excited and thank you for sharing. Thank you for accepting their donation. And this will be something we will celebrate for many, many years.
It's beautiful. How exciting for the students and families at Fox and all of Canis. I can't wait to go visit.
I was thinking the same thing. Thank you, Dr. Sork and everybody. I'm like, when do we get to go do a little site visit over there? We would love to do that. So thank you for all of that.
And you're now a sledgehammer expert, it sounds like, too.
We have all kinds of skills we wouldn't, we didn't know that we would have. It's fantastic.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again, everyone. With that, we can move on to item five, which is excellence in academic, social and lifelong learning, where we are going to, it's an action item to, on the graduation dates for 2020. And here they are listed. Discovery High School is June 9th. Canis High School is June 10th. And Hays Freedom High School is June 11th. And again, this is for 2022 school year.
Do we need a motion? Is that what?
Yes, we do.
I'll second it.
Okay, it was the motion by Doug and a second by Erica. I'm going to do a roll call just because I think it's easier. Corey?
Hi.
Connie?
Hi.
Erica?
I.
Doug?
Hi.
And I also vote aye, so that's unanimous. Gil? All right, we will move on to item six, board communication. This is just a chance for you guys to tell us what you guys have been up to and what you've been hearing in the community. So how about we start with Corey?
Oh, okay. No, I mean, just, you know, my continued efforts to, to engage with as many community stakeholders as possible. We've had, I've had lots of meetings and Zoom calls in the last couple of weeks with staff members. I think I'm up to about 10 staff members in the last couple of weeks. And, and I just appreciate, obviously, the, the conversations have more or less revolved around, you know, remote learning and COVID and our reopening timelines and all that. And I just really appreciate all of the feedback that I'm getting from staff here and from, hearing a wide and, and diverse perspective in terms of the kind of continuum that we're hearing about. So just really appreciate that. And please keep your, keep your comments coming. I also wanted to just let board know that I would encourage you, I have just recently, actually over the weekend, I sent a message to Governor Inslee's office as well as Department of Health, just advocating for K-12 educators and staff to be moved further up on the vaccination timeline. I think that if you, if you look at where we are compared to a lot of, a lot of other states in their vaccine implementation, we are, we're fairly late on the list. Educators have been kind of divided into, into two different tiers where one starts to get vaccinated in February. And there's another one, really not until April, whereas there's a lot of other states who are, excuse me, already starting to administer those vaccinations to their, their education staff now. And, and I think that would be a major, a major hurdle out of our way if we could really advocate for that. So I'd encourage the rest of my board members to reach out to Governor Inslee's office and Department of Health. I'm sure Jeff is, is advocating for that kind of stuff when he meets for, when he meets with Clark County Public Health and Dr. Melnick, et cetera. But I think it's important for the, our, our state elected officials to hear from us as well. So I just leave it at that.
Thank you, Corey. Doug, how about you?
I echo Corey's statement about sentiment about the vaccines. We just had a somewhat of an extended conversation with the House today about how is this going to work? What's it going to look like and all of that? And it seems like access and invitation to come in would be a really nice step forward for educators as an option to have. Other than that, it's been mostly the, the Zoom meetings and just tracking educational issues, getting a lot of comments from parents as of late. Now that we're making some progress regarding opening, I'm sure you're seeing all those comments that came through and others that several friends have reached out with one-on-one contacts as well. So responding to some of those and just digesting this whole transition into a new, you know, small group setting is, is, that's been good exercise. So that, that's really been consuming time, right, as of late.
Thank you, Doug. Erica, how about you?
Thanks, Tracy. And thanks, Corey, for that suggestion. I, I will write our governor and Chris Reichtall tonight. So thank you. And knowing that the legislature kicked off today, I was putting in the House Education Committee meetings, public hearings in my calendar. So let me know if any of my board members would like me to forward my calendar holds. I like to just keep them in there in case I have the opportunity to pop in and listen to those. And I've been talking with neighbors and community members, mostly since the new year, mostly about levy. And so I just would like to take this opportunity to reiterate what I have been hearing and, and sharing is that, because there, I think we're, we're going to have to do some repeating on this of that this is a replacement levy. Timing of it is not our doing. It's the state doing. It's a weird timing. But it's, it, this is all the state. This is not the school district. And this is, I believe, if I can get my data right, that this is one-fifth of our budget. And, and it, it pays for benefits, nurses, counselors, additional positions. We're looking at building improvements, roofs, heaters. So I'm hearing some comments, you know, thinking that this goes directly to learning and, and we're online learning. We're going back to the classroom at some point and we hope that we don't have leaky roofs. We hope that we have nice classrooms, temperature-wise, so that learning can be done easily. These are replacement levies. We're hoping that overall taxes will go down. We have information on that. And, and charts that people can go to on a Vote Yes Canis website. And so these are expired. And I think that's all I have to say about the levy. I'm just doing a quick scan of the questions. Oh, it'll be two votes. There's, because, because one's a replacement levy and one's a, one is a replacement, one's expired. So there will be two votes. Ballots will go out. I've heard of new members of our community moving here over the holiday break. And so people didn't know, I'd also heard that, you know, that this would be a special election, so registering to vote. And I'm not sure the last date for registering to vote, but if you can check in with those new neighbors that have just moved here recently, we can, our schools can use their, their votes.
Thank you, Erica. Connie, how about you? You're, you're on mute still. Oh, give her a second. She, she's working on it.
There we go. Sorry, my screens all of a sudden shifted and closed and here I am. I would just echo everything everybody has said. Same thing, hearing from neighbors and community members on both sides, advising us to be extra cautious. There's the new strain of COVID that's come out that's much more contagious. And I also, Corey, thank you, I'm going to email the governor and Chris Reichtall and Department of Health. I was wondering that too, because I was notified that like as an over 50 educator, that I get to be vaccinated in February. But every, if not, it's April. And I'm like, so wouldn't it make sense to vaccinate everybody upfront and then bring our kids in? So hopefully there's going to be a lot of energy around that. And just, you know, hearing from families whose kids are really struggling, mental health-wise, is just heartbreaking. And it's, you know, it's, it doesn't seem like that there's no risk-free path forward. And so it, it's weighing very heavily, I'm sure, on all the rest of you as well, just trying to strike the right balance in bringing kids back to school fast and safely. You know, it's, we're, we're digesting as much information as we can. And so I appreciate all the input from the community. We have a lot of patrons sending us resources, which I really appreciate. And so thank you for that. And just, you know, welcome to 2022.
It's only 2021.
I mean, 2021, sorry. I, I think I just, that was a Freudian slip. I just skipped all over it. Skip 2021. And I, that's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for your updates. I have to say, I do enjoy listening to you all because I pick up little tidbits of information. And I too will email the Department of Health and Governor Inslee and Chris Reichtall to, as soon as we're done here, I'll do that as well. So thanks, Corey, for reminding that. And Erica, on your calendar holds, I know you're good at sending those out. So I appreciate those because then I, I get those on my calendar as well. And otherwise, I've just been doing the same thing you guys have been doing. I've spoken with some teachers and we did some classroom visits and neighbors. And so we're hearing from everyone and we appreciate that. And I love the opportunity that we have to do those things. Doug and I also did a Capital Projects meeting on Monday. And I know that's on the agenda farther down for Heidi to talk about Garber Theater and what's going on there. And also what's going on at the indoor turf, the indoor facility at Canis High School. So we got lots of good stuff happening there and Garber is looking great. So I'm excited for you guys to hear about that. So next we will move on to item seven, public comments. I believe Jeff is going to summarize the public comments that we received today.
Yeah, and I just want to draw attention, those who are viewing the board meeting live or are going to watch it later on video, you're seeing the agenda that is on our district website. So if you go to the board meetings and there's a, actually in the banner, it links you to it. So you don't even have to navigate. You can just look across the banner as it scrolls. And then there's agenda information. And then each of the topics that the boards are discussing or is discussing is linked in here. And so with public comments, you'll see on the screen that we received nine public comments and it has the citizen's name. And then when you click on that citizen, it gives you the full public comments. And so in summary, so the board has access to all these public comments tonight and has read through them. And then the public has access to them as well. And so they're, they're here and you can look back on previous meetings to see public comments there as well. So it, overall, we did receive nine public comments. Four of those were from parents, three from staff, two from students. A couple of the people are both staff and parents. So there's some blending in there as you look at the public comments. All the comments were related to reopening schools in some fashion. One of the comments was, expressed some frustration about an internal staff survey that was shared publicly as staff were trying to share concerns about thinking to the reopening process. Six comments were, expressed frustration about the current timeline that we have and really pressing us to accelerate that timeline on behalf of what you guys articulated. I think Connie, the last one I heard about just the strain this is having on our students. And also staff members were in that group talking about, you know, just, in particular, staff members who have been on site, serving students and are comfortable with the safety precautions and have been able to do that successfully. So urging you to move forward more quickly. And then two comments, really thinking about waiting until the vaccine, concerns about moving too quickly. And so I know that throughout this, that you've felt the pull and push of trying to navigate this on behalf of our community. And so there's some good thoughts in the public comment tonight that capture that. So I'll pause there. And if there are any other questions, I can address those or we can move forward in the agenda.
Okay, if there are no other questions, thank you, Jeff. And yeah, just a reminder, we did get all of those before the board meeting today and they all are online for anyone to see and look back at at any time. So thank you to everyone who took the time to write letters and send those in. We appreciate that. With that, I will move on to item eight. Did you guys all see the items added to the consent agenda? I'm getting head nods, so I'm taking that as a yes. So then the consent agenda, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Corey. And I'll take a second from Erica. Do we have any discussion? Otherwise, I will do a roll call vote. Corey?
Hi.
Connie?
Hi.
Erica?
Hi.
Doug?
And by the way, did we skip by the UL campus? I have that.
That was the item added to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, so we didn't skip it over.
And Tracy, I think, excuse me, I think that did pass, correct?
Yes, yeah. So, yes, I vote aye. So all in favor. Yes, we got it.
I do note that there may be a typo in the I do note that there may be a typo in this. When I look at the agenda, it says items added to the regular agenda. Right. Just to do this officially, we probably, even though this is a consent agenda item, let's take separate action on it. It is closing out a final acceptance of a project that was completed previously in the district. And so if we could entertain motions and take a vote on this one, just to make sure as we look back and that everything's accurate.
Got it, sorry, I missed that, I just.
No, that's on us, we made a mistake somewhere there.
So Doug, so we'll go back to that. Does anyone have any questions on the UL Campus Cooling Tower Replacement Final Acceptance? And if not, I'll take a, entertain a motion.
Would so move for approval in accordance with staff's recommendation for final acceptance.
Second.
Thank you, Doug, thank you, Connie. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Connie?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so item eight also approves unanimously. Okay, that brings us down to number 10 on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Tracy. So we'll see if this loads to the correct screen. So tonight, I'd like to first to start, January is School Board Appreciation Month. I know that you guys are not so inclined to have a big celebration around that. And this is a time really of just kind of trying to dig in and figure out how to navigate forward. But I'd be remiss without reminding everyone that volunteering to run for school board is a pretty thankless job. And volunteering a ton of time that you guys have put in and really trying to be good listeners, being stewards of the community's resources on behalf of the children we serve. And it's just, it's a big leadership challenge. And you guys have embraced that and have showed up every time and have dug into the research and listened to all sides of all issues and really tried to move forward. And in a world right now that is, certainly, we've seen struggles as we are trying to figure out what democracy means to us in our country right now. The local school boards, I think, and how you guys have tried to navigate this. And I recognize that some will perhaps criticize that you've moved too fast and some that you haven't moved fast enough. The reality is that anybody in your position would be faced with huge challenges to figure this out. And I know how it weighs on you at night as you try to think about all the students and families that you serve. So we appreciate you and I hope you feel that appreciation even through the tough times. And, you know, leaders are needed when it's tough. When things are easy, you know, we pretty much self-manage pretty well as humans. And right now, it's tough. And you guys have really stepped up on behalf of our community, so thank you. School Board Workshop we had today, where amidst the urgency of right now and making decisions about today and tomorrow, you are also thinking about the next iteration of a strategic plan for 2025. And so really appreciate the feedback that you gave me. And I'll highlight a couple of things as we move forward. Wanted to give some levy information, building off of what Eric assured. Give you some information about COVID relief funding. Just keep you up to date on that. And then our reopening schools plan. Have a lot of slides in here tonight, but I also tried to build this because we do have a town hall tomorrow. And so we won't necessarily go through all the slides tonight. A lot of the slides that you went through in the special meeting on the 21st and the meeting on the 14th. But I just, I just thought I'd have them in here and accessible for people. So related to the strategic plan, we talked a lot about student outcomes over the last two years and tried to come up with some overarching statements that really capture what we want all of our Camus student, school, district graduates to have. And then today, we really looked at these four pillar areas of support, relationships, learning equity and support. And we have identified goals in each of those. And then today, I appreciate the feedback you gave me on board level progress monitoring. And so I will bring that back to you in February, the feedback that you gave me. And then we will formally, hopefully, adopt a 2025 strategic plan after a couple of years of work on it and really having to kind of do it a little differently because of COVID. Levy wise, so just a reminder that as we go through this process, we are looking to replace our educational programs and operations levy. And through the years, that has had lots of different names. We have had this levy in place since 1980, which is really when it became a part of school funding in the state of Washington. So it's a long time of support. And over that time period, we've had three to four year cycles where the levy expires. And then we go back to voters to see if they would renew that commitment. You know, it does fund all extracurricular activities, special education and food services. There's some supplements that unfortunately, state and federal funding don't meet what we're obligated to provide. And then we do enhance the educational programming of the district through additional staffing. And one of the biggest examples I can provide to you tonight is with our nursing staff. For our district size, we are allocated 1.175 nurse positions. And you can imagine, as we are trying to navigate a pandemic, how are we to do that with 1.175 nurses and contact tracing and all those things? And so the only way is through community, local community support. And so we have enhanced that ninefold to, and that's probably still not enough at this point during a pandemic. But that community local support is critical to what we provide in the schools, schools as we know them today. And then also Erica mentioned the capital side of things is just the ongoing care of maintenance and all the technology that we've been able to bring into the district and utilize to continue services for students. There is a flyer that will be going out to the public as a school district. Whenever we run a ballot issue, we are able to provide one informational flyer like this. And so our job as a district is just to present the information and hopefully answer questions for voters so they can make an informed decision that works for them and their interests. And so the brochure has graphics like this that show the uses of the funds. They also show historically how we've used those funds. You as a school board have used these three mechanisms to build the district that we have today. And your predecessors did the same thing. And so at certain points over our history, the orange, blue and green bars shrunk or grew depending on the needs of the time or whatever had happened at the state level, bonds that were approved, things of that nature. But as we look ahead, looking to provide stability at a rate that is lower than any rate that we've had in the last four, five, six years. And so to Erica's point, a taxpayer should see a reduction in the rate per thousand of assessed value moving forward with the approval of these levies. And then this is just a historical picture of those combined local tax rates for schools and where they've been. And you can see that there was a lot of volatility in the middle. And what we've been trying to do consistently is bring that rate down back to the level where it was at the around 2000. And so, you know, that's a great thing for taxpayers and hopefully, it's a really good thing too for citizens that have high expectations for our district. The next area of just kind of updating is COVID relief funding. And Jason is, in his budget report, is going to talk a little more about this. This was the first CARES Act iteration of federal funding and where those dollars went. So this is a slide that you've seen before in a different form. And so we were the beneficiaries of about a third of a million dollars in CARES Act. And unfortunately, we're a little over two thirds of a million in expenditures on that. So we're looking forward to additional relief funding from the federal government. So the big, the big energy point, and rightfully so, is around the reopening schools plan. And, you know, this original plan was adopted back in August. And then in December, we met to revise the plan based on our own research and where we were at with the expansion of small groups. And then, of course, after we adopted that, you adopted that on December 16th, the Department of Health released updated guidance. And so you called a special meeting on the 21st to review that guidance and adopt any revisions related to the reopening plan. Just some images from how we're serving students currently. These are Helen Ballard images provided by the staff or the parent volunteer who's doing the yearbook and just showing our kindergarteners in action. And you'll notice masks and distancing. Down in the bottom left is a picture of two students working together, but there's a barrier in between the two. So really trying to create great learning experiences, but also with the safety precautions in place. And so it's, you know, school looks differently. But what's the same is when we get these kids in is the magic of the classroom. And I think you guys have stated throughout this process that we want to keep increasing the number of students in the classroom. You guys have seen our guiding principles, I don't need to go through these again. Tomorrow night, we'll have our fourth iteration of town hall cycles. And so what we have done is done an all-staff meeting, an all-town hall for the community. And then schools are also involved in town halls and communication. So we've really tried to have these cycles where we share high-level information with everyone and then schools share detailed information. And these are the categories of the community conversation. I shared this conversation with you over the weekend after I read through all the thoughts and organized them into themes. And then I also put a Q and A document together where I took all the questions that came up in the top 300 themes and answered every one in one place so people can go to. I think, you know, people have great questions and they want answers. And so we're trying to provide those answers. Unfortunately, sometimes the answers aren't the ones that they want to hear and that can be really frustrating too. As needs are great and we recognize that. So I take all the comments with that people are just trying to do the best for their family. And I know that our staff is trying to do the best for their students and navigate this together. These are some of the top thoughts that we will share in the town hall tomorrow. And then I've built the themes of the content of the presentation tomorrow based on these questions and based on the content and based on the content of these thoughts and then also based on the update from Department of Health. Our current status right now, and this COVID dashboard was updated on Friday was the last, I screenshotted it on Friday. So we've actually had one other confirmed case today, I think. So, and so far, only one transmission in our, in our schools. So, you know, the numbers keep going up, but that's reflective of the COVID in our community, not necessarily reflective of anything happening in our schools. If anything, our mitigation strategies are really demonstrating that they're, they're working. Last week, we had a nice drop. Unfortunately, it looks like this week in talking with Public Health today, we will be probably around 350-ish or so and then potentially heading up to 400, just based on the cases that we've been having per day over the last five, six, seven days. You know, they, they don't, they never know exactly where these cases are coming from. We've had some large outbreaks at correction facilities in the county. And then they're also speculating because of the holidays. And now we're seeing one, two weeks removed from that, so they're starting to show up. The other thing to note is sometimes test positivity in our community has been a delayed indicator just as they're trying to capture all the negative tests, all the positive tests. And so I've noticed that when you go to the Clark County Public Health site, that the data may be accurate up to December 14th and we're in January. So just, we kind of take that with a grain of salt. The next update, and oh, this screenshot is a little blurry, I apologize. The Washington State Governor Inslee announced the roadmap to recovery. We've been kind of in hold as a state. We had this plan of phases that was initiated last spring and counties were moving towards those phases. And then it kind of went awry and they paused. And so since that time, we've just kind of been in a state of whatever situation the governor has tried to address. There are proclamation of closures or openings. And so this is the roadmap to recovery and it looks at four different metrics, decreasing. And the difference here is it's not talking about you have to get to a certain number, it's about reduction. And so it'll be interesting to see if that allows us to move more quickly or more slowly through the phases. And it's significant because these phases are about non-K-12. It's more about what's happening in the community and what businesses are allowed to be open. But it does have implications for our WIAA activities. They built in athletics into these, into the roadmap to recovery. And so in phase one, we're able to have practices and things of that nature. But we need to get to phase two in order to have competitions based on what the guidelines say at this point. So that's a barrier that we're going to have to figure out. WIAA has come out with a schedule for the seasons with the first season starting the first week of February. But they've also allowed leagues to make decisions outside of that timeline. So for example, football is a sport that is a high-risk sport and it's in the first season. And so as a, as a region, as a league, we could make a decision about delaying that season so that students would have a better chance of being able to compete because we have a better chance of getting to phase two. And so obviously, we can't make that decision alone because we need competition to be alongside. And so the ADs across the region met today to talk about that. And I know the superintendents are meeting with WIAA on Friday to address it as well. So more to come on that. By this, this last week's, and the state updates the dashboard every Friday, Southwest Washington region is actually in fairly good shape. We were meeting in two of the indicators, so the decreasing rates and the hospital capacity. Unfortunately, with our uptick in cases, we probably won't meet that first indicator next week. And so we'll just have to kind of keep monitoring this, it's a new system for us. And so I wanted to call it to your attention tonight. Any questions about that? Okay. Another clarification that came up in the town hall is our reporting. And, you know, we are, if you look at the districts across, across Clark County, I think we're the only one that has a dashboard like this on our website. There is information on Clark County Public Health, but it doesn't report all these cases, it only reports outbreaks. And so I want to make sure people understand what an outbreak is. Because when I initially think about outbreak, I think back to the movie that I saw as a kid. And what outbreak means right now is that there's two confirmed and connected cases in that site. And so really, all you need is one person having COVID and one other person getting COVID. And that's an outbreak. And so I think that that's a different definition than maybe most people just assume when, you know, an outbreak is like lots of people getting sick. And it's really about transmission. And so to date, we have had one outbreak. It involved one student and one staff member at Skyridge Middle School. And that's what's on the Clark County Public Health site. And you can see all the different outbreaks across the county. And overall, there's, there's not very many of them. And when you think about all the students that we've been serving, that's, that's a testament to the countermeasures and staff and students following those countermeasures. So I'm not going to keep going, you guys have gone over the research. Typically, update each time. I don't really have anything new that I didn't share with you on December 21st related to this. We are continuing to monitor mental health, behavioral health across the state and then also within our own school system. One thing that I'm highlighting a little differently, last time when I showed this to you, I think I was looking at one of these other factors, closure on mental and physical health. Ventilation was another one that we researched. And we actually found some new ways to do some spot checking on our, on our rooms and the air exchange rate. And so our team did some learning about that, they, they got some equipment. And now we go around and just like we spot check our drinking fountains for lead in the water and different things like that, we're able to add another layer of checking air quality. And so all of our systems meet standard, all of our filters meet standard. We have emergency notification that comes up if a filter's failing or anything like that. So we have all the level that meets LNI guidance and state guidance. But this is just another layer that staff are exploring and finding out new ways to make sure that the spaces are safe. And so our HVAC team, our operations team is doing a great job with that. I've talked about the national database with you guys before, so you've seen this, we continue to add our data to this. Some definitions, I think this is an important part. I know that we've worked together on these, but I want to spend some time in the town hall tomorrow. Our small group changed with the new recommendation, so it's groups of students that are co-horted into 15 or less. And the idea is that those 15 kids stay intact together. And the idea is that those fifteen kids stay intact together to minimize transmission. We're still having remote learning happening, but kids are getting that enhanced by coming into the schools. Typically the day is altered in some fashion. So like our elementary schools aren't going the full day right now. Hybrid is when we bring in students just basically in an alpha split. So that we can meet the physical distance guidance. In, in that model, students are coming in for two full days of instruction. And then the other three days are remote and capacity is really determined by how many students we can fit in and keep those distances. Meet the standards. In person is when we're just bringing kids fully in. As we transition fully to in person, we will start with four days of in-person instruction. And then move to the normal five days that we've had in the past. The reason that we're doing that is, one is that we're going to have a number of students that are still being served remotely. And so we need opportunities for staff to connect with them. And then as we saw in our COVID dashboard, there are numbers of students and staff that end up being quarantined through this process. Until we get to full vaccination, we're going to still have that component. And so we need to understand how does that play out? How do we continue to engage with students who are not able to come on site? And then finally, the full-time remote learning is going to continue to be an option for students. And we've talked about maybe having to regroup staff to meet those students' needs who, who choose that option. And we've done that with kindergarten. We're going to continue to do that as we add grade levels moving forward. You guys have seen this slide a lot about how we've increased. We paused in December and now next Tuesday will be our next large. Movement forward with small groups with first and second. We've talked about in the, the meeting on the twenty first, the, the changes to Department of Health. Department of Health is very clear that these are, are not hard thresholds. So if somebody is saying, why, why would we move a little quicker when we're above three fifty? These are guidances, you know, the, so you know, we have the discretion to decide when and how we want to move forward collectively. You guys have seen these all as well, that they are looking at not just COVID when they made these recommendations, but also. The value of in-person learning for students. And so they weighed those two and came up with these, these metrics. The definition of small group and youngest learners telling us that it's K three. And then they also went through this checklist that we need to make sure that we are following. That we can do these things in order to bring more students on site and we are answering yes to all these questions. The caveat with staff is that as staff and students come on campus, there are more trainings that are needed. It's one thing to learn about it through a Zoom meeting. It's another thing to move kids in a building and make sure everybody's following the, the protocols. So that's what's important about phasing this into is to giving an opportunity for a building to kind of grow into this. I realize that some people will say we've had nine months to figure this out and they're correct. But we haven't had kids in the building. And so working through that with staff is really, really important to keep everybody safe. The yellow highlighted ones, we talked about are really county health requirements. And so as I check in with them weekly, making sure that they can still meet these standards that have been outlined. They also talk about transitioning and thinking about rates flat or decreasing before we really do large scale additions. And then knowing that we can pause, but we don't have to backtrack either. Once we get students in and it's working. As long as we're demonstrating our ability to limit transmission in school environment, then we're able to keep those kids in. They define the high, moderate and low COVID activities levels with different thresholds. And then they made recommendations within that to use small groups to expand in the high COVID. In moderate, we can start using hybrid, starting with any grade levels that haven't been in yet and working our way up from K eight. And then they do put in another threshold around high school students, just because of the research around transmissions. And also the models in high school tend to have students mixing more. It's a little more difficult to cohort them. Here's the low COVID activity level. And so this is kind of a summary of what you adopted back on the twenty first. A timeline for high COVID activity level. And so we were in moderate last week. We're probably in high this week. We're probably going to do some fluctuating, which makes it a little more complicated. But when we're fluctuating, then our default is the high timeline. And so we have on the nineteenth, our K one, two students will all be in person, two days per week with that time. We're scheduled to have third grade and sixth grade join them on February first. Looking at fourth and fifth grade on February sixteenth. And then seventh through twelfth, they, we are continuing to add, expand those small groups even now. At Camas High School over the last, we brought in sixty additional seniors. And we continue to bring in people who, students who have a need. And, and we want to keep building on that. But one of the things that we're recognizing is that. You know, it's, it's confusing and frustrating for people in the public, you know, well, when does my kid get, come back? And when students are, you know, just like they're ready to come back and they need, they need a timeline on that, right? To help them understand. And so looking at February sixteenth is as we scale up these small groups. To really think about the full grade level and their needs. And so if, if there are any students that have a need to come in, that we would look at seventh and eighth grade coming in on the sixteenth. We would continue to add, expand at the high school level and then drawing a benchmark for March first. Where again, any student in those grade levels who has the need, we would, we would serve them in person in small groups. If we're in high COVID activity level. Now, in high COVID activity level, based on the Department of Health recommendations, there's some guidelines. I mean, if we can only put groups of fifteen students together, you can imagine that, that makes it pretty hard at Camas High School for them to just go to all their classes. And so we've got to be pretty creative about what that looks like. And I'll give you some samples of that later in this presentation. I'd like to pause here and answer any questions and also entertain some discussion. Because especially this last line is a little more specific than what we talked about on, on December twenty first in the special meeting.
I had a quick question. You said that any student who has the need, who's deciding if they has, if they have the need? And what if it's the parent saying my child has the need to come in? Like, how, how are we deciding what, what that is?
Yeah. Small groups are starting with academics and social emotional indicators. And so the academics are a little more straightforward. So you know, if a student is failing all their classes. They're probably higher need than a student failing three classes. And so that's a threshold to work through that way. Unfortunately, I've, I've heard from a lot of parents that are saying, you know, my kid's passing. It's not, they're, they're doing okay academically. It's that they're starving, right? They, they need fellowship with other students. They need to feel like they're connected to somebody beyond their room. And so once we get to the full grade level, ultimately the parent will decide the need. Tracy, that the parent knows their student best. They've seen the experience. If they feel like the student needs this opportunity, then I feel like it's our obligation to provide it. And who am I to say to a mother that their student doesn't need to come in? I'm not there with them all the time.
So our timeline would be if a parent thinks their student needs to come in, according to this, they would come in on the first, if they're nine, ten, eleven or twelve.
Correct. And up until that point, we'll continue to add based on our indicators of need. But I, I feel like we need to, to tell people, you know, this is where we're going. This timeline is the, the same as Spokane School District right now, some other larger districts that are looking at. When students can come back and really trying to figure out high school. We recognize that the high school grade level presents some challenges, but the social emotional needs are great there. And so really want to try to figure out a way to just say, you know, we're going to, we're going to get them all in some way, somehow.
So, so Jeff, I heard you say that, that we are prioritizing social emotional. Cause I've, I've talked to some people who are saying, you know, well, if your student's not failing their classes. Or there's a threshold of five Ds. But I'm hoping that our counselors are working with parents and being able to identify those students who have, you know, more serious social emotional needs. That, that they need more days on campus and we can make that happen.
Yeah, I, I think as, as I said, the academic indicators are a little easier to identify, aren't they? Like, and the social emotional indicators are, are difficult. And that's where I feel like we need to defer to the parents in that situation. And I know that, you know, to, to do this right and follow the, the recommendations of Department of Health and to support our staff. We just can't bring everybody in tomorrow. I mean, that's, that's not responsible. But we need to give hope to people and let them know when they can come in. And we need to let staff know when, when that would be as well. And so we'll continue to add based on need. And, and I think Connie, to your point, I'm sure there is kids out there that feel like they need more. Or their parents that feel like they need more. And we need to tell them when we, we, we're going to come back. Now, the hard part about high school, when we get in that, and I should say Camas High School in particular. Because Hayes Freedom and Discovery High Schools, there's model, their models are built more on cohorts. And so they have an ability to do that at a, at a different level than Camas High School does. And so how, how do you bring in two thousand students in a way that keeps them in a small group of fifteen? And so it's not gonna, it's not gonna be, meet everyone's needs initially, but it's a start. And, and, and then hopefully we can transition to hybrid really quickly. So I'm curious about your thoughts about that, that high school timeline in particular. When we look at this and, and again, it's not that we're not bringing in kids up to that point. It's just at that point, we're really giving. Parents the, the, the opportunity to tell us that they need this service.
So I thought I saw a slide that showed ninth and twelfth graders also going in on the sixteenth. Is that an option or not an option? Cause I, I just feel like, why can't we move kids into Camas High School also on the sixth? Or all the high schools, I mean, because it's different buildings. So is our thought to doing that? So we're not bringing all the high schoolers in at the same time?
The, the challenge at Camas High School is the models, the classes are, are mixed grade level. So it gets really complicated to bring in one grade level at Camas High School. With that though, that you guys have told us to prioritize seniors and freshmen. Because of the transition both into high school and the transition out of high school. And so that's where we're expanding, like I said, the sixty additional students at Camas High School that are seniors. So between now and March first, we would continue to increase. And if we were to move into moderate, then we would accelerate this timeline, but I'm wanting to present kind of the worst case scenario timeline. That if we're in high COVID, we're going to incrementally keep adding these grade levels until we get all K twelve in some sort of. Small group fashion and then we can build from there.
Jeff, what, what is the? The two weeks between each move, there's a two week gap. Can you tell us how that was determined and what's happening in that time?
Yeah.
Be shorter or?
It, it's related to the COVID monitoring window of the metrics are two week based. And so trying to know when we do make a move, is it impacting the, the county in any way, the region in any way, our community in any way? So it allows us to get, get groups in, reassess what's happening and then add another layer to that. And so that's, that's primarily why we've looked at those timelines. Again, if we move into moderate, I'm sorry Connie, but if we move into moderate or low, then you'll see in a future slide of how we're trying to accelerate that. Given the constraints of when those reporting data come out, but.
So what I heard you say is that if we do it one week apart, is that. We're not looking at a complete cycle of information and there's more volatility in that?
It, that's it, is to really give us a little time to assess what's happening in the community before we bring in more. And also to, like, we've been really tried to, I know you heard about the elementary plan a little more specifically last time. But it's a big deal when we're going to add in lunches and we're going to add in the specialist rotation. And so we're going from a small group of a teacher working with fifteen or fewer kids to a music teacher working with every kid in the school. Potentially. And so really trying to be thoughtful about how we move forward because we do not want to go backwards. Right? Like, and if we have an outbreak or there's something that happens, then or a number of people are quarantined, it's going to be a real challenge. And so far, our incremental approach has been working with that. But it's, it's a fair argument to, you know, we could move faster if we, if we, if you feel like we should. But this is based on kind of our staff looking at and working with our, our, our teachers and, and parents. On how do we make sure that they're feeling supported and understand the process moving forward as well?
How does this compare with the process that other districts are using as far as the timing of bringing in the different grade levels?
So we're, we're kind of pretty comparable. I think some districts are waiting a little longer and then bringing in more students. We're the only district that's talking about secondary students. The other districts are saying, we will, they're just saying, we're waiting until rates to go down. And I'm saying just in the Clark County region, as you look at the plans from others, certainly other districts across the country. And across the state are doing that differently, but you guys have talked about, you know, a timeline for secondary students. So that's why we've produced, you know, a schedule for sixth through twelfth as well. And so, you know, that's where we differ. The districts are bringing in K three together and some are only bringing in K one. So.
This, this is consistent with the guidance we've been talking about, which is kind of this phased in move in accordance with. Kind of our, our, the, the COVID protocols. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the path they're taking. And if we can move down to moderate levels or stay in moderate and actually see declines. To come back and revisit this. And I'm assuming we can do that in a special meeting if need be to reevaluate and accelerate if possible. Or if we have an outbreak and we can't seem to control it, to slow it down and to reassess what we're doing and how we should apply. You know, our COVID containment measures.
Yes.
I feel like you're in the, on the right path. And so far the feedback I'm hearing and what I hear reported from staff is that it's working. The measures are working, the programs are reaching students and I appreciate that. I, I, I think that's a good work and the caution I think is merited because the other side of that is an outbreak and then we lose a bunch of ground.
I'm going to keep going through because some of the, where your conversations are drifting are to some of the future slides too. It's hard to figure out how to package this because it gets complicated when we move into moderate. Right? Nothing is, nothing is linear about this, right? Like there's just, there's more new information all the time. And so the last time that we met, we, we talked about this moderate timeline. And thinking about, again, this is where there's some flexibility in the guidance. It talks about three fifty is the threshold for moderate. But we talked about when we hit that three fifty threshold, if the next week we're, we're at three seventy. We're going to continue to move forward, right? Like it's, we're trying to, we don't want to do all this starting and stopping, starting and stopping. If we, if we cross that three seventy-five threshold, then we'll pause a week and, and reevaluate. But it's important that we, we try to keep moving forward. It's been too long, right? Like just and, and not, it's, it's been too long for students to be out of school, regardless of whatever the situation is and all these factors. It just kids need to be in school and they haven't been since last March thirteenth. And so we don't want to just, at least what we talked about last time is having a little flexibility to keep moving forward with the planning. So I tried to put this into a really simple slide. But let me walk you through this a little because this has that, what you just told me is it sounds reasonable, is that timeline for grade level. So, so let's say we, if it's, we're just staying high, which is not good. But we're going to still move forward and increase in-person learning experiences, fifteen students or less this way. But what happens if we go into a moderate? And so if we go into moderate the first week, the second week, so we get the data on Tuesday. That next Tuesday, if we're Thursday, three seventy-five or lower, then this is what would happen. And, and so here's the difference because if it happened on January twenty fifth, our K one and two would already be in school. Right? But on January twenty fifth, third graders aren't in school yet, sixth graders aren't in school yet. And so that's why when it says on the second week, on, on January twenty fifth, which is that Thursday. Then these kids who have already been in school, we're going to expand their hours and go to hybrid. The other kids who have not been in school, we will wait till the following Monday. So it gives us just a little bit of stage, but we're not going to wait a full two weeks, right? So it, it helps us move those first kids forward, kind of figure that out. And then on the following Monday, the next group would come in. Of third, fourth and fifth graders, because in moderate, it says we can run K five hybrid. Now it changes if it's February first, because on February first, our third graders are in, right? And the language says. And the language says that we should start first with elementary to move to hybrid, and that's why sixth grade isn't in this group. But these grades would immediately, that, that, that following Thursday flip to hybrid. So we get the data point on Tuesday, Wednesday is a remote day, Thursday, those kids would come in for hybrid. And then the following Monday, fourth and fifth would come in. So I did a series of that based on who's in person now. Do we have all of our K-5 in? If we do, now we can move sixth grade to hybrid as well. And then we would build on it. So it's, it's kind of trying to look at the next, all the way up to March 1st, what would happen? If we get a second week of hybrid, and I know that's, that's confusing. But I was just trying to articulate, okay, if then, if then, here's what we would do. Couple of notes on this slide before I stop. We have the capacity to run elementary schools, meeting the physical distancing requirements without hybrid. We, we can do that. And so once we clear the high COVID level of small groups, which we're, we're, we're. The recommendation is to do, we moved to hybrid, if we've got everybody in hybrid because it's moderate. On that second, after two consecutive weeks in moderate, we're gonna go ahead and transition into the full days per the guidance. Right? And meet the physical distancing requirements. We're gonna hold on the Wednesday and keep that as a remote learning day, just because we know we're gonna have a lot of movement still and students in and out. And, and all the quarantine and things like that. So then we'll transition later. When we're back to a normal kind of setting in elementary to what we did in 2018, 19. High school, in order to transition, and the recommendation says we need to be hitting the 200 range within moderate. And so that's why you don't see the high school on here, although you'll still see them in those small groups. So I'm gonna pause and see if I can answer a question in this horrible, horribly full slide.
I appreciate you trying to explain that, it still is so confusing in my brain to look at the right hand side. But I know that, I know that it all makes sense, it's, it's just a lot of information. And just going back one more time is my only heartache, or I should say my biggest heartache is just. That we've pushed the high schoolers to the first instead of the 16th. And so I don't know if we're saying that's not possible to put the ninth and 12th graders or some of them in on the 16th. Because that's kind of what we said we were gonna do at our special board meeting session, and I just don't like. Pushing them out farther, I guess, is, is my heartache there? And how, how, and if we can overcome that is my, is my concern.
I would echo that, especially because they're two different systems, the seventh and eighth are in the middle schools. And then 9, 10, 11, 12 in the high schools. And I'm still trying to digest this. I'm still trying to understand the two week. What happens in those two weeks rather than one week? So you bring kids in. On one week, and if, if we're in high, then. The next week, then one course of action, if we're in moderate. And then if we go, we bring them in and we go moderate, moderate, high. We've already had two weeks of moderate and we've made a decision of what's happening, and then if it's high, it's high. But if we, okay. In that two weeks, are we, are we trying to assess? Inside our system, like we bring this group of kids in for the week. And then we see the impact that they have on our system before we bring more kids in?
Yes, and externally as well, but for sure internally monitoring that. So if we've got kindergartners on the bus only right now, and some other students who are served through an IEP or 504 plan. And now on Tuesday, we're adding first and second graders to that. What happened, right? Like, have we seen any significant change? What, what about our processes do we need to consider? How is the dismissal and going to the buses, is it working as planned? So it allows our staff to really analyze, you know, are we? Are those countermeasures gonna work the same way when you only have kindergarten in the school as it does when you have kindergarten first and second in the school? So it's really trying to be, I think as Doug said, phasing in. And so that we make sure that we're doing, doing it right. That on the other side of it, the two week is, is just what you were saying, like if it goes moderate, moderate. And then high, that's different, we would stay in, in hybrid even in that high. And we would assess over, you know, the next couple of weeks to determine if we need to move back or not. If we, if we give it the two weeks, then we, we have a little bit more of assurance that, that this is, this is statistically what's happening in the community. As opposed to just going one week and, and turning it over. However, with that being said, that's why I built in these, you know, if it, if the second week it's high or moderate. I don't want to wait all the way till next Monday to get kids in, right? So I get the data point on Tuesday. It's a remote day on Wednesday, so I'm gonna bring in all those kids that were already in school into hybrid. So I'm, I'm expanding their day, I'm doing those things. And then the following Monday, the kids that haven't been in small groups, then we can move them into hybrid too. So it does allow a little bit of a staggered start for, for those groups as we make a pretty big transition.
Hey Jeff, um, do, I know, I'm trying to think back to like. Last, last year when we had the measles outbreak in the county. And Clark County Public Health was going through and like if a building had an outbreak, they would shut an out, they would shut a building down for a while. Does public health do the same thing with us in, in regard to COVID if we reach a certain number of cases? Or if they trace an outbreak back to us, can they come in and shut it down?
Yep, it'll be a, a very similar process. As they've told me measles is much more contagious than COVID. And so they would, they would definitely use those same protocols and look at what happened with our contact tracing. Is it widespread, is it contained to, you know, just it happened in this classroom? And so there would be most likely some quarantining in that classroom based on the, you know, being in close proximity, 15 minutes. There's, there's thresholds around contact tracing. But they, they definitely have that authority to do so, and they would be monitoring and working with us.
But more than likely, it would be something like where they quarantine an entire class as opposed to shutting the entire school down?
That's, at least that's been the experience to date. Because our trends, I mean, our one outbreak was two people and, and they didn't. You know, what happens in the outbreaks then is you do some interviews too with public health afterwards. So initially you identify what happened, you work through interview all the, the people involved. You make a determination on close contacts, you send out that notification first, then you make a notification to the entire school community. This happened, but you're not a close contact. And then after the process and an outbreak, then we, we sit down administration or nursing staff. With public health to review to see if there, was there any changes in practice, those kinds of things. So I would anticipate that, that something like that would happen as well. And then there would be a determination on, on what, what action needs to be taken. Those decisions are definitely partnership with public health. So we can open up, we can make these decisions, and then if there's cases, then we work with them. We also don't just determine the contact, their close contacts by ourselves or anything like that. Like, everything always has their oversight as well, just to make sure, you know, if somebody was saying, I'm trying to push this through or I wanna. You know, hide data, no, it's all out there. And in our district, even Marissa with the COVID dashboard. And, you know, and then as a result of what happened, this is what we need to do and these are who we need to notify.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, so when a class needs to quarantine? Am I correct in thinking that then they just go to remote? They'll be quarantined but still schooling, but just they can't be in the building, correct?
Correct, and, and, and of course, based in, in a positive case, the same situation, you know, you hope that. That the symptoms are minor and, and, you know, kids or staff are able to still be engaged. That's why that remote learning backbone is so important, when you look at the number of students as, that we've served so far that have been quarantined. Or had a case, symptoms, we've got to continue services, which is, is difficult, right? And so that leads to some other questions on some future slides here about what does that look like when you have a blend of remote and in-person? So what I'm hearing from you guys right now, I just want to make sure, you know, that, you know, some, some hopeful acceleration of high school. And I, I think we can, we can definitely do that at Hayes and Discovery because of their models. And the challenge is gonna be on bringing whole grade levels into Camus High School. Just because of how intertwined those, those schedules are and how it works. But the teams are, are, are talking about that, trying to figure that out. So, but other than that, comfort, comfort level with, you know, certainly March 1st, I'm not hearing that you guys are saying that's, that's too soon.
Ask one other quick question, so are we going to explore the possibility of some of the high schoolers going back sooner? Can, can we do that? And then how would we communicate that back? Because I think that's part of the confusion even I have as a parent is, I think they're starting the 16th and then I think they're starting the first. And, and I guess, I'm sure we'll be updated on these at every board meeting and every week, but how are we making sure our parents know when that is gonna be?
Yeah, it's a good question, Tracy. On the, on the sum of the students back, absolutely, like I mentioned, 60 seniors, right? Like, so absolutely, keep working through that. It, it's just that, the hard part is then, i- if you're not bringing back all the grade level at Camus High, or you're not bringing them back all. Who are you bringing back and how do you communicate that out to the entire student body in a way that doesn't confuse people, right? So, you know, certainly the, the, the schools could put a threshold, you know, any, any student. Which is how they've started to identify these small groups, you know, with the number of grades that they were struggling with or, you know, those kinds of indicators. So, so they could work towards that. I just know in the models that they're looking at, where they're really trying to. Replicate at Camus High School an experience where they are getting to meet with their teachers. That it, it gets a little difficult to, to move forward with one grade level at a time as opposed to the entire school. We could, you know, potentially have some sort of model where we're just bringing kids in for. Instead of moving to their, all six of their classes, they're moving with a teacher, right? So there's just, you divide the kids up of Camus High School into groups of 15 or less. And one of them gets Mr. Snow, one of them gets Mr. McHenry, and Mr. Quinn takes 15, Miss Malone, you know? But that's not gonna be necessarily the classes that they see or, and so. That's, that's been the, the real conundrum with, with what to do with the school at Camus High School. Camus High School is built to be an efficient academic, like every offering in the world you can think of, like. And that really works well in a non-pandemic situation. At, at least it works well in terms of moving students to and from lots of opportunities. And it doesn't work so well, and, and when we're supposed to limit to 15 students or less. It's, it's really difficult and our staff are, are doing their best to, to try to figure out what that looks like. And I understand the frustration from the community of like. Yeah, so. So I'm gonna move this to the next slide and keep kind of, kind of talking about, you know, because these, you guys are helping me with specifics. And then these are kind of the higher level, just kind of the. The way you've been making decisions, and so just love for you guys to talk about this a little bit.
I think that when we say minimize transitions for students, families and staff, what we're also talking about is. What you said Jeff is, is not going backwards, so I, I know. Every person on this call should really have their eyes glazing over of the if A then B, but in case C maybe Z. You know, that's how fluid this is. Pushing forward as safely as we can. With the ability to pause or keep pushing based on external, internal. And not go backwards. That's what I feel like I'm hearing and that minimized transitions. Is really important.
I agree, and also. The continued expansion of small groups when we're in high, especially at high school, Jeff, you had mentioned, you know, maybe. You know, teacher X has 15 kids, and, and maybe we do some of that up until we bring high schoolers back. You know, from my experience seeing the kids that are coming into the school I work at. They're sitting in the cafeteria, which would, looks like would have been a dreaded detention experience, and they are just. So happy to be in the building and to be able to see other students and some teachers now and then. That, that, that just the, the positive effect of getting kids back in the building. Even if they're sitting in a classroom doing their remote class. But have, being able to have some inter- interaction, maybe they do a community circle to start or some of those things. So if we can continue to be creative and pushing on getting kids in the high school in small groups. That may be, you know, it doesn't resemble school so much as it's getting them back in the, the building. Being able to access maybe a teacher or two, maybe it's a social emotional group that comes in and they, they, they work on things that are, are non-academic. But I'd, I'd love to see us increase the number of students at the high school that we're able to work with. And I know it's extraordinarily complex, and I know they're working really hard, but. I'm just really concerned for the mental health of our high school kids. And just getting, getting, getting our eyeballs on them. You know, it's not gonna look like where school looked like, but if we could just bring them in, you know, hey, you get to come in today for two hours. And, you know, we're gonna have 15 kids in this room and we're gonna talk about what's going on, you know, or, or whatever. But just being able to. You know, it's hard, we, we've got, we certainly will want to have those kids who are most academically at risk to come in. But we also have a lot of other kids at risk that, you know, if we could in theory have 15 kids. Per staff member in the building at a time, can we do that right now? So I think the number that we could serve maybe could. Grow faster.
We could have students in the building that way, the transportation piece would be a, a little challenging. But I, I, I think what I talked with Dr. Williams about, you know, she is leading. Because one of the other things that is written into the guidance is to collaborate with staff as you make these plans. And so she's leading a, a group of teacher leaders and administrators on figuring this out. And I, I think what I would like them to do is, at the next board meeting is just to present some of their ideas to you. You know, that, that would be still a couple of weeks before whatever timeline that we would need to do. But I know they're listening to this and. So we could give some models, and again, it's specific to, really it's specific to Camus High School. Hayes Freedom and Discovery High School, you know, they, they cohort kids differently and, and they don't have six period schedule like Camus High. So we'll, we'll do that for the next board meeting and keep thinking about that high school timeline. Knowing that, you know, at the very worst, March 1st would be when, you know, 9, 10, 11, 12 could move in. And I'll show you a, a sample of what that looks like, because really what, what Camus High School is looking at is, is basically a quarter cohort model. So that they could go to see each of their classes, and it would be one day a week that they would do that. And then when it transitioned to moderate, then they would be able to go to two days and then hopefully we could add days. And so they would get to see their academic teachers, which is something that we've heard from parents too, is, you know. People have said, don't make it a study hall, even, you know, Connie, as you said, getting in might be really a positive thing. So, does that sound reasonable?
Oh, that sounds good.
So some other areas that we talked about last time, that I want to also share with the town hall are around health and safety. This is a big thing, as I looked at the thought exchange, just people really wondering what happens if my son has symptoms. Or if I'm at work and some, I'm exposed, what am I supposed to do with my own student? Or, you know, and so we have all these really involved flow charts. From county health that really try to walk you through every scenario, and you would think that every scenario is covered in this chart. But my experience is the very first scenario you try to work through, you're like, I'm not sure if this is covered in this chart, right? Because each situation is usually pretty unique, but I kind of walked through this already with you guys about. How do we, how do we notify and what does that look like? Whether it's just a confirmed case in the school or if it's an outbreak, and how do we proceed with that? Another, I, I really appreciate you guys talking about vaccinations and I really appreciate your advocacy for this. Um, so we are, as Clark County Supes, we're signing on to a letter to Governor Inslee tomorrow as a region, um, just asking, um, that instead of that differentiation by age. And I, I understand that the reason they're doing this is because there's not enough vaccination, right? And so the state is trying to make very difficult decisions on who gets the vaccination, life and death decisions. And so, um, I, I humbly share my opinion as a superintendent that it would be much better to have all of our staff vaccinated at the same time. And we're also talking with Clark County Public Health of if we can, like bring them to our schools, right? Like we would love to host vaccination sites. And if that means our staff gets all vaccinated on the same, same time, great. If it means then we turn into regional vaccination centers for other, um, people, great. We, we want, the more vaccinations that are out there, the more likely we're going to be able to have, uh, a return to normal school operations. So we're advocating that as well. And then we, um, Clark County put together a, a vaccination like, um, web form. So we submit all of our 1A staff, so our nursing staff, our health assistance staff. Um, those folks, Carol Bruce entered into that database. And then we already have staff that have been vaccinated. And so that's great, like we're moving forward. Um, and then yesterday there was a flurry of activity because, um, apparently there was some extra vaccinations at one of the public health, um, dispensaries. And so staff were contacting other staff and more staff got, um, vaccinated because, um, the care provider didn't want vaccinations to go to waste kind of thing is, is. So there's some grassroots things happening, I think. And then there's some system things happening. And, um, as a state, uh, you know, there's, I've, I've shared some articles, um, about the system and they have a website for that. So, um, we're also just kind of trying to provide as a region, you know, if they said, okay, we're going to vaccinate all the special education staff in the, in the region, how many staff is that, right? And so we can quickly say, well, you're going to need, uh, 5,000 vaccines for that. So trying to be ready with anything so that there isn't in, any barrier that we're creating based on our lack of preparation. These are some of the models that we'll, we'll share, um, I just want to have for, um, the town hall tomorrow. So this is what elementary small groups looks like. Um, and you can see that there's time built in for travel home and then on-demand PE or on-demand music, um, cell lessons. And so those on-demand also give parents choice because that was one of the concerns about the, you know, increasing the date of 130, but not 230. Um, so there's some flexibility there for, for students and families. And then as you scale this up into hybrid, um, we're full day. And again, if we're in moderate level, really this schedule should only last a couple of weeks. Um, because if we're in moderate level, then we can transition to more days for our kids, um, because of our capacity at the elementary level. We're, we're very fortunate because of our elementary schools. Um, small groups at middle school. So this is the sixth, sixth grade draft from Liberty. Um, I sent, sent you guys the full document of, of this. So you probably have some familiarity with all the rationale behind it. Um, but really just showing that our sixth graders would be coming in in small groups. Um, they would see two core content areas. And so as a group of 15, they would move here. And then this teacher would come in and serve them there so that it's contained. Um, and then they would, uh, travel, go home for lunch and then have their electives in the afternoon. Um, and then some also class time to work, right? So typically in a school day, teachers instruct 10, 15 minutes and then they give class time to work. And then there's some check-in. And so there's time built in here to do the work and then prioritize the time in, in person to really engage with students and help them, uh, move forward. And then it flips, you know, when these sixth graders are the, the group that's, that aren't in school, um, their day looks a little different and they're getting it live zooms in the afternoon, uh, remotely and having their on-demand, um, when the other sixth graders are in the building. So that's, that's an example of a small schools in middle. Um, and then when we scale up, just what would be different about that? And so really, you know, the transitions are going to increase, you know, because now instead of just going to their two classes, they're going to, we're going to add the electives in there. Um, and that's why it's important for us to get into moderate, um, because now our exposure is greater, right? So, um, start, start smart in small groups. Use it to leverage quickly into hybrid, uh, when conditions a- allow. High school, so small groups, this is Haze Freedom on the first slide and what it looks like. And so just a schedule of, of when students are coming in on campus and when students are being remote, um, how they're organized into, um, uh, different groups, uh, to do that. And then here's what high school could look like. And so you'll notice, um, if, if we were to go at Camus High School with a full-scale small group, um, that you have A1 and A2. And so that means that in hybrid, you'd only have A and A. So your cohort A would be on Monday and Tuesday and your cohort B would be on Thursday and Friday. But these are like half of the half. And so you may only have like seven kids with you. And so your teacher's going to have a lot of direct contact with those students and really help them. And then you're going to move to another group of seven students. Some of those kids are going to be the same, um, as you go through the day. And again, these are all drafts, so it, it could be that the movement is only three periods when we're in hybrid. Um, and then the next day you're in the next three periods. Um, but to start out in small groups, this is what, um, the Camus High team is looking at. And so in a couple of weeks, when we come back, we can, um, offer, um, their thinking further on that. So this was, uh, the first day of, of kindergarten at Helen Baller. And, um, you know, we want to just keep building on this, uh, as part of our reopening plans. And, um, it's a lot of slides and a lot of information. So I'm, I'm going to stop and then just kind of, um, let you guys comment. Um, you know, are we on the right track? Would you like, you know, is there something different, um, based on what, what you've heard tonight?
Hey, um, side 61. And I, we're not sharing the screen anymore. So just, I know that if you're putting these on the website and people are reading these, um, it's, it, there's some things that I want to make sure that, that people understand. Like I get if symptoms stay home, if confirmed case, do XYZ. Notification of close contacts, notification of everyone. What does that exactly mean? So everybody understands those last three bullets.
So what happens is, um, we do the notification of close contacts. And so after we, if there's a confirmed case, we go through the documentation to identify close contacts. And that includes interviews of the staff and it includes looking at like seating charts and who was in the space. Um, and then partnering with public health to determine those close contacts. And then there is a, um, a call, an email with a letter, um, that notifies close contacts that you are in close contact of someone, um, who has a confirmed case and this is what you need to do. Um, after that step is completed, then there's a letter that goes out to, um, like the entire school, Skyridge Middle School and says, there was a confirmed case at the school. We have identified close contacts and you were not one of those close contacts. This is just an FYI for you, um, as you're, you know, because people want to know and, and they want to be informed of it. Um, and so that, that's, that's what's happening on those bullets. On the flow chart over here is, is helping us determine like when they can come back to school or why can't they come back to school or how long do they need to stay out of school, that kind of a thing. Did I answer your question, Erica?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just trying to make sure that folks know when they read this and they're not hearing your voice, they know who is determining that, who's leading those actions.
That's good feedback, Erica. So, um, because some of these, some people don't go to the town hall, they just access the slides. So I'll try to, um, I'm going to make a note on that slide 61 and just add a little more context to bullet, uh, three and four. Other questions?
Jeff, I just wanted to type in and say, um, this is all really complex. And I, I, it, it makes me more appreciative and understanding of turning the aircraft carrier on a dime and how difficult that is and how complex this is and how many moving pieces. And I appreciate all the work that's going in to make these plans in every building at, in each grade level. And, um, my head is spinning. And I imagine theirs have been spinning for much longer than mine. So thanks to all the staff working on this.
Yeah, staff are, are working really hard. And, um, I know it, it, the thing that just is really frustrating is that despite, um, all that effort and we can't meet people's needs. And that's just so, so frustrating because I know that every, and you guys are reading it in every comment and every phone call that, um, we're not able to meet people's needs. And I hate that, you know, it's, it's, it's not okay. And, and yet I, I don't know how to, how to make it better. So just keep moving forward.
It's interesting because I look back at, uh, slide, uh, no, I'm not seeing the numbers right now. It's the one with the tables on it with the potential for acceleration. If we end up getting below and moving into moderate. I feel like you've set up the opportunity if this community can pull ourselves out of high, get us into moderate and then begin a downward climb through disciplined COVID compliant, health-related steps. We have the foundation to bring our students back in a nice, safe way. I feel like we have that opportunity at least planned for, which is medically sound and observed good practices. We can get this done. Uh, we do need the help of our community. We need parents and students to, to be disciplined enough to help us serve them better. And I would feel good about that. I know we're doing our half, uh, maybe more than a half, but we're do, we're setting up the foundation for that to happen. The chart looks very reasoned. It allows for a full week acceleration on, on several grade levels. So, I mean, that makes sense to me and I think it's a measured, demonstrated path forward. So I'm optimistic. Maybe we'll get lucky and this community will slide down, we'll get below the 350 and then we'll continue downward for a good solid two weeks now that the holiday seasons have kind of lapsed. Uh, this, this could be, we could be moving a little more rapidly, we could be moving more towards your below 375 chart. I, I would like to see that.
Thanks Doug, I appreciate your words and, um, agree with you. Thank you.
Yeah, as is usual, Doug says it more eloquently than the rest of us. So good job Doug. I'm, I, um, I, I am interested in seeing more, um, more concrete plans at the, at the secondary level. Um, I've always felt like I've understood the, the elementary, the plan, plan we have for elementary. It seems to, it seems to really make more sense. I still just feel a little unsure about, um, what, what high school looks like. So I look forward to getting a, a little bit more in-depth presentation, uh, at the next board meeting about, about secondary. I even think back to, you know, when we first made our, our original plan and we had that day in the life of, um, you know, I, maybe we don't need something with as cute of graphics, but I, I, I would, I would like the, I would like to understand. And I think that the community, um, would, would be more confident understanding what is this going to look like from the minute my kid steps onto the property at Camus High School until they, until they get on the bus and, and go home. Um, so I know even I, this is not a unique problem to us. I know that every secondary school around here is really struggling with how to, with how to make this work. And, uh, and it's, it's complicated, but, um, I would love to see where we're at, um, at the next meeting.
And I would echo that Cory. I think, um, seeing it and hearing more about it at the next board meeting is really going to be helpful to us and to our families. So they know what it is that they, that their kids are going to be doing. Um, because I think there's just a little bit of confusion. But I think with this meeting, we're giving, um, those secondary building principals and, and staff the ability to figure out what that plan is and come to us with it, right? So, um, or some ideas of what it's going to look like. So, um, I look forward to that also.
Also, I'm confident that there are a lot of these plans already in place, that they're figuring out, you know, how to stagger lunches and do assigned seating in the cafeteria and classrooms, just like we, once the elementaries got kids, those kinders, you know, all the playground zones and all the things that we never heard of. But there was, you know, an intricate amount of planning that went in there. So I'm sure there's a lot of that already identified, um, and still it's a bigger system. And so more potentially to come or leveraging off what has worked. You know, in the elementaries that can scale to high school. You don't have to worry about the playground so much.
Well, it's, it's good feedback for us. Thank you guys. Um, thank you for the, the clarification around that timeline as kind of the, the worst case scenario if we stay in high. Um, and then, um, hopefully we have to work through that complicated matrix of being in moderate, right? Um, and, uh, we'll see if, if what I put in there comes to fruition on the, on the timeline. Uh, but, uh, I, I really appreciate the discussion and, um, I'll try to share this with the town tomorrow in the town hall. Um, and then, uh, Dr. Williams will, um, work with the team to give you some more examples at the next board meeting of, of a day in a life, um, maybe even with some of those cute graphics, Cory. So, um, I'll turn it back to you, Tracy, um, and I'll reshare the, um, general meeting screen.
Thank you. Um, so, and thank you for all the discussion on that. It was very helpful. Um, so that moves us to item B, the monthly capital programs report. Is that Heidi?
It is. Heidi, are you here?
Uh, Jeff, I don't see her. Um, how about if I just go ahead with the business services update and maybe we can get, um, Heidi on the line?
Yep, sounds great. Okay with you Tracy?
Yep, we'll move to item C.
I do see Heidi in the, uh, in the attendees, so she just needs to be promoted.
Do we want to start with Jason?
Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start with Jason and then I'll work on the backend to get Heidi in there. I apologize.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, um, to start off, I, I, I want to, it, it feels like Jeff always does the heavy lifting, right? And, and then, uh, at least in these, in these meetings of, of recent time. And so, um, I'll give you a nice light business services update report, talk about some numbers. Um, and so maybe I, I, I get to, get to have the easy part here. Um, so Jeff mentioned about kind of the COVID relief bill. Uh, well, I want to talk a little bit about that. That has been kind of the second round has been released. Um, give you a basic ed enrollment update, uh, and then an outlook to 2021. Uh, and then we'll kind of close with, uh, with questions and any, any input that you folks may have. So looking at, uh, the COVID relief bill, uh, just, just terminology purposes, you'll hear the term ESER. ESER is kind of like, kind of the part of the federal bill this dedicated towards K through 12. And so the elementary, secondary schools, emergency relief. So that's that, that's the, when you hear, I'll hear the, or I'll use the term ESER 1 or ESER 2. That means kind of phase one was, was, um, what we already have received. And then there is phase two, uh, which the, uh, which the federal government just passed this path, um, in December. So, um, now the federal bill, there was 2.3 trillion dollars, the T. Um, Washington State will get 825 million of that for K through 12 purposes. So, and then a portion of that gets actually allocated to local school districts based upon the Title I methodology. So, um, to give you kind of a perspective, you know, ESER 1, the, the state of Washington got about 195 million. So almost four times the amount of money, um, is what, you know, Washington State will be receiving for K-12 education. Thus far, what I'm learning, you know, from OSPI and some, some of our other partners is that kind of that second phase is to be used for the same purposes as, as the first phase with some new allowable purposes. And they're really focusing on reopening, um, with kind of these new focuses. And so they want to talk, you know, if we're incurring costs associated with learning loss, you know, addressing student learning loss, preparing our schools for reopening and, and testing, uh, repairing, upgrading, uh, you know, air quality equipment, that type of thing, those, those are the, the new, uh, uses for ESER funds. Um, as far as when it would be available. So there's a process that has to happen at the state of Washington. So the legislature must act anytime they receive monies from the feds in this manner and basically grant authority to OSPI to distribute to K through 12 stu-, uh, uh, school, school districts. So, uh, they're, they're entering into obviously the session starting. they're they're entering into obviously the session starting. And so they'll do that process kind of through their basically through their budget or or, you know, enforcement process. So so we'll see, they could do it early or it could be part, it could be part of kind of how the session rolls up at the end with you know, with the budget being passed. So we really don't know the timing, but I would expect it's not going to be for a while, right?
Jason, quick question. Are those funds eligible to be used for operational costs? Like, we're going to have obviously some higher heating bills because we'll be flushing heat out through the vents to height, you know, increase our circulation. And I assume our cleaning and janitorial staff will be more under demand. I don't know if that's more bodies or more hours. Can those funds be used for operational? It looked like they were not, it didn't specifically note in operational expenses.
Yeah, I mean, it it has to tie back to you know, being COVID driven, if you will, right? So to 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 that degree, yes. Are they just going to fund operations in general?
No, I I was thinking that you're going to be circulating cold air into the buildings on a more frequent basis. Your heating bill could go up. And then also, I'm assuming janitorial staff is going to be and custodial staff are going to be really, really busy and diligent over the next bit. Trying to get our COVID compliant cleaning in place and disinfection.
You know, where we can, we we will, we will be recording costs associated with COVID. I will say this, Doug, it really some of the smaller nuanced matters are really just not coming into play because our allocation is so small in relation to other districts. So you know, our first round was 330,000. If you look at just hard costs that we've we've spent today, we're pushing 700,000 year, you know, you so far since since the pandemic started. So we've more than doubled our first claim.
I'm not optimistic. Why is it can apply that so?
Yeah. And so, you know, our next round, we're looking at 1.27 million if you kind of take the rough math, right? Of what the state of Washington has in total. But if you look at kind of what we could actually claim, because we can claim revenue loss, right? And and other districts around the state who received this funding have 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 claimed revenue loss. You know, we would have eligible claims probably in the neighborhood of probably around 7.9 million dollars. And so, you know, you take 1.6 million off the dogged, we're still over 6 million of unmet need. You know, so we're trying to, you know, still capture those costs because it's important. I think it's important to, you know, be able to say, you know, what is this costiness? What is the impact of of this pandemic? And and what are the resources that are available to us to offset these these impacts? And so you know, we're very thankful for the support. And I don't want to suggest that we're not. I just wish it were more, you know, I heard a report today. You know, nationally, the second round is about $1,200 per student. You look at our 1.3 million dollars, that's about $180 per student. In comparison, we get about one fifth of what's going, what of what some other larger districts are getting. So it's just the manner in which it's allocated. I wish it were a different story for us, so. But stay tuned. I'll let you know when we get the second round. And we know more from OSPI as to what we can use it for and claim expenses and what happened. Any other questions or shall I move on? Okay, I know that was a short window. Any questions? And then I move the slide. Want to give you an update on basic ed enrollment. We've been kind of trending down over the first three months of the year, and then it kind of it it steadied. And then since December, this past month, we lost another additional 29 FTE. So that puts us 6.4% below budget. And we really want to see this trend change, right? I I hope this is not an indication of the remainder of the year. I really would love to see this turned around. I'm I'm hopeful with with all the discussion around reopening and bringing kids back. I really hope that becomes a catalyst to turn this trend around. But it's it's impacting us financially. As I mentioned before, kind of updated this graph, but it's materially the same since I provided you some time ago. I'm looking at revenues of overall of about 98 million. It's about it's a little 6.4 million less than what we had budgeted. The lion's share of that is this 5.2 million of state funding. So so our apportionment is down, you know, and we lose 6.4% of our enrollment. That affects our state apportionment. Obviously, local non-tax, which is, you know, our local receipts, if we're not in school, or, you know, we're not receiving those monies. You know, that could change, you know, this this picture could improve, right? But it's it's kind of my best estimate at this time. On the expenditure side of the house, I seem to get this question a lot. Well, you're not in school, so you must be saving money. And let's say, yes, we're spending less. We're, you know, if I projected out where we are at thus far this year and continued at the same pace, we'd come in about 7.4 million dollars under budget. We're still $2 million in the hole, right? Even at this, our revenues, or excuse me, our expenditures exceed our revenues by $2 million. I what I expect is that this revenue number, or excuse me, this expenditure number will start to climb. So as we reopen, we're going to be bringing people back off of furlough. We're going to be, you know, hiring the supports necessary to to ensure that you know, we can, we can have kids on campus safely. So I I see this as kind of trending up, if I if I had to guess, for the remainder of the year. So kind of bottom line, if you ask me today, kind of what's that range of where are we going to end up? Probably in that 2 to 3 million dollar deficit. And I will say that 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 is factoring in some likelihood that we we would see some of the ESER Phase 2 funds too. So it's 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 I factored that in to this equation. So again, we're what, four months in? Be patient. I'm going to give you information as I get it. Just know it is, it's changing every month. And hopefully, all these changes are though are ultimately for the better, right? To get our students back on campuses. So any questions on that? Okay. Again, thank you, school board. You guys are amazing. I've I've had the pleasure to work for other governing boards at other organizations. In my previous life, I met probably with more elected officials than you could possibly imagine at all levels in the state of Washington. And you all are first class. And I mean that truly. It's you're you're a great group. You don't hear it enough. And I really appreciate all the all the work you do for us.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks for all your work.
Yes, thank you, Jason, and thank you for those kind words, too. With that, I believe we're going to move back to item B, the monthly capital programs report. I think we're ready for that now. I see it happening.
Good evening. And yeah, we were kind of in the dark, so I wasn't able to say, I'm here. But anyway, we're here and I have some representatives from Malum Architects and from KPFF tonight to help make the presentation. And I'm going to go through my piece of it really quickly because I want to get to their their work. Abby Dacey is a principal at Malum. Igor Draskovic is an architect at Malum. And then Nick Rillstone is an engineer at KPFF Engineering. So just wanted to introduce them real quickly. You want to go to the next slide? Last year's or last month's billings were about $1 million and we're tracking well with the projects getting close to the end. Then the next one. And again, the summary for project status is very similar to what last month's was as well. We're getting very close to the end of this program. Most projects will be done by the end of spring and the one final project will be the Garber Theater and we're hoping to be done. Hoping to be done. We will be done in September 2021. Okay, next. And then this is the percent complete in terms of invoicing to date as of the end of December. So Garber's close to 30% invoiced. The fields are just about done. And the new fieldhouse at CHS is has not invoiced a lot, but there's a picture at the end of this presentation that shows you that the steel framing is up at that facility. Okay, next. All right. So I'm going to have these guys go ahead and do their presentation. And I'm not going to cover the last three sides slides in the overall presentation because they're just pictures of the other projects. So anybody who has access to that presentation and it's on online can see those. So I'm going to turn it over to the Malum and KPFF team and go ahead.
Great. Thanks, Heidi. Can you guys hear us? Great. Next slide, please. So as you guys know, I've presented to you many times over the past, gosh, three, four years now that we've been on the the process of Garber. So this is kind of exciting because it's a construction update and our goal is to show you a little bit about what's going on inside the building since you can't see that as you drive by. This is an aerial shot from a couple of weeks ago. So it's even more advanced than what you see here. Next slide. And here you see kind of just an overview of some of the construction photographs. In the upper left is from the very beginning of the process and then the lower right is quite recent. So a lot of work is happening. And so what we have done is organized today. We're going to have, Nick is going to give kind of an overview of some of the kind of structural considerations that were are the logistics behind the project. And then he and Igor are going to go back and forth and share a couple of stories from inside the building. Go for it, Nick.
Exactly. So my name is Nick Rillstone. As Heidi mentioned, I'm a structural engineer with KPFF. So when the Garber Theater was originally constructed in the 1930s, our understanding of seismic hazards and our understanding of way buildings move and behave and our understanding of materials they're made out of, you know, was much less advanced than it is today. So I'll explain that and compare the two by comparing the building codes at the time and some seismic hazard maps. So on the left is the uniform building code in 1935. And this is likely that the the building code that the Garber Theater was originally designed to. And one of the things you'll notice is one, that it only cost a dollar back then. But two, that the entire engineering section, so this contains all detailing practices, you know, where loads from manmade causes and natural hazards come from, as well as what the limit states for building materials are, is only 60 pages. So structural engineers in the 30s use this document to design buildings and then there's guidance in here on how to go build them. So there's a masonry section, a wood section, a reinforced concrete section, a steel section. Because those are, you know, were traditionally were traditional building materials at the time, but they're all contained in one document. And again, there's only 60 pages of information. So keep that in mind. Previous slide, please. Go back. Cheating a little bit. So on the right side of this is the understanding of seismic hazard in the Western United States. And what you'll see is that it's pretty generic. It's not very detailed. But also keep this in mind. The other thing I think to look at, I think, is interesting is this blurb at the very bottom is an excerpt from the appendix of the building code. And what it says is that the design of buildings for earthquake shocks is a moot question. And then what that really spoke to was that at that time, our understanding of the way buildings move and what seismic hazard really was, was really pretty limited. So engineers didn't design for earthquakes back then. We we understood that they happened, but there was really no good guidance on how to design an earthquake resistant structure. And this provision was not mandatory, it was voluntary. So if you're a building official, you want to say, in my jurisdiction, we will design earthquakes. The standard of practice is the UBC. Engineers refer to this. And that was that was relatively uncommon for that to be done. Next slide, please. So these are current standards. On the left, you'll see that there's, these are the basic documents that structural engineers use to design buildings with the same materials that were listed in UBC in the 30s. So what you'll see is that there's nine of them. There's no longer just one. And that each of these documents is substantially longer than the entire engineering section. So nine standards with 3,700 pages of design guidelines, load generation, analysis techniques, you know, so our understanding of building materials and the way structures deform and they move and they respond to different kinds of hazards, different kinds of loadings over the last 80 years has has grown quite substantially. And I think this is a good way to communicate that. So we build larger, more advanced structures. On the right is a map from the USGS that shows our current understanding of seismic hazard in the United States. And, you know, you can see that in the western region or the western half of the United States, and the hazard is, you know, what we expect. It's it was similar, but more intense. So now we understand much better our geology, the frequency, intensity and distribution of seismic events much better than we did 80 years ago. And and another good way to look at this is, you know, earthquakes were not assumed to be a natural hazard on the East Coast, but we can see that in South Carolina, there's a there's a fault that runs near Charleston. And there's also the New Madras Fault in near St. Louis. So those were faults that we didn't know existed back then. But now, as our knowledge has expanded and our understanding of seismicity and seismology has expanded, we have a better handle on what seismic hazards we're likely to face. Next slide.
Hi, I'm Igor Draskovic. I'm, can everyone hear me fine? Just checking. Okay, so on the left, you see kind of the preconstruction demolition. What you guys knew Garber Theater as. And we focused the project on the main functionality of the theater and bringing it up to the modern standards that Nick had mentioned. So the image on the right shows how what our strategy behind this is slotting these, we call them shear walls, and that resists these earthquake forces. And we're having to slot them into the theater to, you know, bring it up to that to the current code. So we can go to the next slide.
Okay, so one of the challenges we face is the existing structure itself. We try to reuse as much of it as we can because it has some value and we understand that it has value. So on this particular instance, on the left, you can see a rendering of the existing or the finished structure. On the right, you can see a picture of the wall that's behind that pretty new brick. And that wall is four ways of brick and it's part of the original classroom building. And over its lifespan, it has shifted from interior wall to exterior wall to interior wall. And now it's going back to exterior, I think.
Sort of the next slide. Yeah, we can see that.
So you're going to want to talk about this issue, but then we'll jump back to.
Yeah, yeah. So the top building, the top image on the left is the original 1919's building. That was the high school and it was a, that was the far right wall was the exterior wall. When the Garber Theater was built as an addition to the high school, it became an interior wall. And then when your original, original building was demolished, it became an exterior wall again with little bathroom tower attached to it, presumably to, you know, hold it up. Maybe they've kind of kicked this can down the road. They've kind of kicked this can down the road until Nick and I here have to resolve it for you. And we can go to the next slide.
Thanks. So this, this slide shows on the left is the existing condition. So you can see the kind of whitish brick is infill from the very original windows. And then on the right is the results. We did some field investigations with the contractor. And just kind of tracking through what the different materials are. And you can see that this wall has served multiple purposes over its entire life. And you can almost track the history of all the renovations and everything that's been done to it through the different materials. So I'll quickly try to explain what's going on. So the red hashed areas, you can see those are original, original classroom building, that's brick areas. So if you're to create that on the left side, that's the kind of redder, redder brick. The blue and the green and the yellow areas are reinforced concrete sections, lightly reinforced concrete sections that were, trying to think if that's what it says. They were installed when the Garber Theater was built. And the way they did this was they, they just cut sections of the brick out and poured the concrete directly into these voids. So that the concrete was sort of socketed into the brick. Then there's other portions of it that's the, the red horizontal hatches, hash areas that are CMU blocks that, you know, what it seems like is that the opening was too large when they infilled the original, original building. So they needed to make it smaller when they did some other addition. So there's, there's many different material types on this wall. And one of the issues is, you know, when we talked about building practices, this kind of brick is not very ductile and doesn't perform very well on earthquakes. So in order to mitigate this and to retrofit this, we use our modern detailing practices. And you can see that over time, you know, this wall has been used for many things. And when we look at today, what we feel is acceptable building performance, urine does not meet those criteria. So we provide a new shock treat wall attached to this to make it safe. Next slide please.
Do we have control? Next slide. So moving past the wall, the rest of those sheer walls that we're slotting in and as well as like the rest of the structure that is needed to bring the building up to code is essentially building a ship in a bottle with the, with the existing building. We're building a building within a building to get it up to its current code. And from the picture, you could, from this picture, this is the fly loft roof at the stage. You can see the congestion in a lot of areas we're having to work, work around. These are the new smoke hatches. And so you can see this is like the fly loft and the rigging above that we're having to work around. Quickly on the image on the top right is the floor plan. You can see those cheek walls to the right and left of the theater seating. That's another area we're having to work in to fit these, fit the slotty shear walls into the building. Akin to a ship in a bottle. Next slide.
Yeah, so, so these are some images of the new concrete shear walls. Igor is mentioning that they're called shear walls. That's because they resist, they're concrete walls that resist horizontal forces. And they're specifically designed in detail to do so. But like you're saying, it's building a ship in a bottle. So we're retrofitting the structure. The structure wasn't originally built to have these extra walls put in place. So we have to balance the program uses of the structure as a theater with the retrofits that we have to do to meet current code. And these, like you were saying, these cheek walls were a great place to put them. But they are a little challenging to access. So you can see all the scaffolding that they have to use to physically tie the rebar in place and then come in and shoot shock treat on top of it. But you can also see some of the special seismic detailing that we use to create structures that are more earthquake resistant. We tie this rebar into the structure and then we connect the two walls together. And that gives us the strength and ductility we need. Next slide.
Moving into another portion of the building, it's currently in the, to be completed in the future in the next few months. We are carving this two-story lobby space as part of the experience to enter the building. It also becomes a sort of practice area for the, for the theater department. On the left, you could see this is, it's currently just the classrooms we've, and you go to the next slide where we've, we've stripped all the material down and it's, it's ready to start being carved away slowly up until that balcony line you saw on the rendering on the previous image. But this is kind of, this is the point that it's in now. So the flooring is going to go away here. You're going to, for a portion of it, it's going to get pulled back. And then a new shear wall was also gone, this wall on the, on the, on the south end of the building in between these windows as well as additional structural components that are going to use to hold the space up. Next slide. And then, so things that we're currently working on throughout the rest of the building. On the top left, you see this foundation walls being built. They're already poured for the, for the restroom addition and the, and the yard, mechanical and service yard. And then middle top image, the rigging, the current rigging is still in place. That will all get replaced and be new, but that will also include additional steel to go up on, near and around the rigging.
Yeah, and I'll take the rest of these. The, the larger picture on the right shows one of the scaffolding towers that they use to install the rebar. So we have to tie the rebar cages and move up the building. And then guys who come and shoot shock, we have to like physically get up there and they had their little shock treat gun. And they spray concrete onto the, onto the rebar. In the lower left is the rebar coming out, rebar for the new shear walls, it comes out of the foundation. So the foundations are dug down to meet the bottom of the existing walls. You can see they just cast one of the foundations and then the rebar comes out and they tie all rebar next to it and connect it. And they slowly like build up the structure and build the wall up. And then the bottom center picture, these are some of the floor joists that'll be used to frame out the new, the classroom addition on the west side, the bathroom tower on the east side. So they're on site, ready to install. Next slide.
All right, so we've got two slides here remembering where we're heading. The final image of the outside and then the next slide, I think it's the inside of the lobby. So lots more construction to go, but you'll start to see it taking its final shape here shortly. And then really be working on the interior to get it up to the final look. Open if any of you've got questions.
Just.
A pop quiz on seismic safety in 1930s?
It was unfortunate to find that some of these things weren't evident until we tore off the old building. And I appreciate having walked right up to the ship in the bottle wall and see them trying to fit that in. It was, I, I'm glad I'm not a contractor on that particular job. It would have been a miserable tunnel to work column area. But this is a good, clear understanding of why this building was closed. You know, we took the step and we, we ceased all activity and we moved all students out. And I'm looking forward to, what was that date? September of 21. I'm looking forward to that day to put this thing back to life. So thank you. And the, and the structural class 101.
Yeah, I just thought it was going to be a really lovely way for you to understand kind of what's on the inside. It's easy to walk on the outside and go, oh, that's really cool. They got rid of that part and they're building this new part. But to, to know what's happening within the structure is really important. And there's a lot of work associated with that.
And those all were great pictures too. I loved all the pictures. It really helped explain it well. So thanks for taking those and putting that together.
Invite you on, yeah, we invite you on a tour next, as soon as you'd like to go actually. So that'd be great.
Thank you so much. Appreciated that. All the explanation and history. That's amazing.
Thank you guys. Is that it Heidi? For you?
It is for me too. Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you, Malum and KPFF for coming here too and presenting that. That was very helpful.
Heidi, thank you for doing that.
So with that, we will move on to item 11, quality facilities and resources. And item A is Garber Theater remodel change order. So I'm sure that's back to you Heidi.
Yes, do you have, do you have that in front of you? Well, I do too. Do you have any questions regarding the item?
I don't think I have any questions. Did we need any explanation on it or we're, we're good? And if nobody has any questions on it, then we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the item 11A.
Oh, Doug gives me a second with a mute on, so I'll take a second from Doug. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then I'll do a roll call vote on that change order. Corey?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Connie?
She was just moved to attendee.
I know, I lost her. So, okay, I also vote aye. So without Connie, we, we can pass that one. And hopefully we get Connie brought back up, but.
Here she comes.
There she is.
And I'm back.
Okay.
The audience for a few seconds.
Okay, so that passes unanimously now with Connie back in the picture. So with that, I believe we are finished with our regular scheduled board meeting. We are now going to go into an executive session to discuss property and two personnel issues. And it should take us 15 minutes on each issue. So that's about 45 minutes and no action will be taken. So I believe we're going to exit out of this meeting and then go back into the other one. Is that correct?
That is correct Tracy. And we'll keep this meeting open with just an executive session slide. And then I will come back at the end of the executive session and let anybody know who's still on here that it concluded.
Okay, so we, there's a different link in our email to get to the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So are we good to leave here and go there now?
Yep.
Thank you.
Be kind of holding. So you'll have to leave this meeting so you can get into the next one.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Tom.
Thank you.
It is eight fifty eight PM and the board has finished with the executive session and is not taking any action.